Good evening. It is November, November 6, 2025. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. May I have a motion to return to public session? Motion by Bill, second by Carolyn. All those in favor? Six zero. Thank you. Would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was afraid I would mess up the words. Hudson, we're going to start with you tonight. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Okay. Good evening to all the board members, district officials, and community members present today or listening on Zoom. This past month has seen the continued success of block scheduling at John Jay High School. Now that we are back into action, we can truly notice the stress that block scheduling has alleviated for students. It has fit perfectly into our school, and students are very grateful for it. John Jay congratulated five students for being named to both the area All-State Concert Band and the area All-State Orchestra. This is extremely difficult and impressive to achieve, and it showcases the wide variety of opportunities offered for students here at John Jay. At the high school and other news, on October 22nd, the business marketing class went to MetLife Stadium. They got to meet with the New York Jets executives and learn about the marketing and sales side of running an NFL stadium. Students also got to enter the locker rooms and see the player setups. And while the Jets may be having a rough season this year, students did know that they loved being immersed in the business and the stadium. We had our Red Ribbon Week on the 27th, and this included Halloween falling on the Friday. Almost every student was wearing their costume this year, which truly demonstrates the supportive school culture at John Jay, and it aligns with the KLSD 2030's plan of belonging and well-being. The middle school, similarly to the high school, underwent a schedule change this year. They now have an extended lunch, which allows for more time for recess and lunch, and students noted enjoying having the more time to relax and socialize. The middle school also introduced a new ambassador program. Each academic team has ambassadors along with the art and gym classes. These ambassadors are voted upon by their peers. They attend student council meetings and are responsible for posting pictures on Thrill Share for their teams. They will also help lead team events throughout the year. The new ambassador program provides opportunity for student leadership development, aligning with the Vision 2030 Plan of learner-centered leadership. The middle school student council also started up their snack shop yesterday, November 5th. They sell snacks a few days a week at the school, and they're entirely operated by students. With the funds last year, they bought two benches for the courtyard for $800, and they donated $700 to the green team to purchase plants. JJM has also got to meet Coco, the new therapy dog. She'll be at the school as a resource for students when they feel stressed or need a break. Having Coco at the school aligns with pillar five well-being. Looking forward to upcoming events at the high school. The seniors will have their senior portraits taken on November 7th. Somehow, the fall sports season has already ended, so winter varsity and JV sports will begin on November 17th. On the 20th, the Fall Drama will open up, and the art show, which is an opportunity for students taking art classes, to showcase their work, will open on the 20th. And seniors will be inducted to the National Honor Society on November 24th. JJMS will open its Fall Drama, The Two Faces of Hamlet, on November 13th. There are two acts, each with a separate cast. The first is a retelling of Hamlet, followed by a comedic version. On November 25th, the preseason meeting for middle school fall sports takes place. At Meadow Pond, the NPESPTO started their book fair today, November 6th, and it will run until November 17th. The Increase Miller PTO will host the 5th grade bingo night on November 13th, and KES will be having the annual 5th grade Thanksgiving parade on November 26th. During the parade, 5th graders get the opportunity to speak out in front of the school for many of their first times. Following the parade, all schools have an early dismissal on the 26th, leading into the four-day Thanksgiving break. Altogether, it's been a very successful month at all schools. Two months into school, it's essential to highlight the success of block scheduling at the high school. This is attributed to both our teachers for adapting their curriculum and to students for embracing the changes. We are looking forward to continuing the success throughout the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Hudson.
Thank you.
Very much.
We can really tell, listening to your report, that you've been working a lot with Ray and bringing everything back to our pillars. I don't know if it's resonating with everybody else around the table, but thank you. In just a few minutes, we've just been through our own exercise of that. So I like that you're connecting what the community wanted to see in our school to what is actually going on. So it's very helpful. So thank you. Board and Board Committee reports. Let's start with Audit Committee. That didn't meet, right?
Mm-hmm.
Finance.
Finance, yes. We met in October, had a very lively, detailed conversation. A great group of dedicated volunteers on our committee, which is really, really great to see. First off, our healthcare. We talked about potential 10% increase in the district's healthcare costs, roughly $3 million impact, and explored possible solutions. We need to honor our contracts with the three bargaining units, and we're trying to find ways to manage all these rising costs. Lisa has researched P&amp;W Boces, but the buy-in is millions of dollars, and it's not really an option for us. We're also in touch with Nye Best, which is another provider, potential another provider, but they're not a viable option either just yet. So we are kind of stuck where we are. We're looking at other potential options, but there's not a lot we can do at this point. Second, the building condition survey is underway, and will form the basis for our new five-year capital improvement plan. We expect it to be completed in January, February timeframe. We also discussed how to prioritize and finance the resulting projects that come out of that. The good news is that so far, there's no Level One issues, which identify with your major safety infrastructure issues, which is good. And finally, we're charged with developing a comprehensive, long-term financial plan and forecast. This will help the district anticipate and plan for potential financial challenges that we might have in the future. We reviewed the major components of that plan, and we expect to have a fully developed plan by the end of the school year to present to the community. There we have it.
Thanks, Phil. Facilities, Marjorie.
Sure. Well, maybe it's a good segue, because similarly, in the spirit of looking for cost savings, very exciting news. Thanks to Lisa's very hard work. The EPC has been approved by State Ed. You'll remember at the last meeting, we were really trying to do this in short order, and so thank you, and that's wonderful news. And now, the RFP has been released for Lisa's financing, and all of this is really on track for a 1231 completion.
That's awesome.
To be in place by 1231, which is very important. With regard to our bond work, the B-Wing, as we know, is done and has been celebrated and is being enjoyed. And now we've started working on the C-Wing. We anticipate completion of some C-Wing milestones in May, so we're going to be living with this construction for a little while. The front of the high school first phase should be completed relatively soon, end of December, we're hoping, completion of Phase 1. And then ultimately, you know, we're looking at the end of the school year into the summer for more full completion of the front and the enclosure and the new driveway. So again, we're going to be living with that construction for a while. As was mentioned at the last meeting, the last time I reported out, we're anticipating that the KES vestibule is going to be under construction during December break. We need a little bit of time for that. And otherwise, it's just really punchless items in the other buildings. So we're in really good shape to bring to closure what we need to bring to closure by the end of the year, which is very exciting.
That's great.
Bids are out for water project at Meadow Pond and the tanks here at the high school, and we're already doing walkthroughs. We're very excited about contractor interest, and we hope to be bringing some proposals to the board at the very next meeting, November 20th, for approval. Great. Good for Facilities.
Thanks, Marjorie.
Thank you.
LES has not met, but we're going to talk more about LES tonight. Parent Council liaison.
We have not met since our last meeting, but we are meeting tomorrow.
Great. Policy Committee?
Sure. The Policy Committee met last Friday, Halloween, and had a very good conversation looking ahead to think about the policies that are important to our administrative colleagues and our staff, and so we now have a plan for the rest of the year. So while tonight, we're only bringing you one policy with very minor proposed changes for first read, and we can look at that during the consent agenda if anybody had any questions, more policies will be forthcoming in the future because we have big plans.
Thank you. Sustainability.
Meeting in the morning.
Oh, good. 8:30 a.m.?
Yes.
8:15.
Oh, 8:15. Thank you, guys. Win the prize.
Early start.
Marjorie, Ms. Butt and Wes Putt?
Sure. Thank you. Primarily, Wes Putt and Ms. Butt are really focusing right now on finalizing our advocacy platforms. So you'll be hearing a little bit more about that in the coming weeks. And just looking ahead to next week, we're really excited about the annual dinner at Tilly Foster Farm, and I know Katona Lewisboro is going to have fantastic representation, which is very exciting because the featured conversation, if you will, it's going to be a Q and A, kind of a mini-panel conversation about education in an era of artificial intelligence. And we're going to be hearing from Lou Wool, one of Ray's colleagues, who's currently the president of LHC OSS, the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents, and Ellen McDonald, who is the executive director of The Lyric, and I learned, a former math teacher here in Katona Lewisboro at the high school, like 30 years ago, maybe?
Oh, wow.
So very excited to meet her. I've not met her. I didn't know whether anybody else around the table maybe had. But yeah, I read her bio, and it's right up there on The Lyric. She's the executive director, and she's former math teacher here.
And it's always a great meeting.
Yes, it should be a lot of fun. It's Thursday, a week from today. It's the annual dinner, and if you'd like to go, please let Kim know, and she can help register you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Tilly Foster, they put on a great spread, but you get to meet with other colleagues from across the region, regional dinner. So it's always a good one. District Safety Committee? I don't think we've met. ERGC, that's...
We meet in early December, isn't that right?
Okay. Food Services Committee? Not met yet. And Special Education, we haven't met again. I think we meet again in December. Yeah, I think we talked last meeting about what a great turnout it was and what a great meeting it was, right? Board announcements? Do they have board announcements? I know Chris will be here, and do you want to share during your presentation about where we are with our fall season? I had reached out to Chris to get some things, not knowing he was here, but I'll let him share the great news of our seasons himself. And so without further ado, I think we'll move into our conversation on Lewisboro Elementary and welcome H2M to our board table. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. So thank you. So I'll go ahead and have our team introduce themselves here. So it's going to be a conversation with our colleagues from H2M, myself, and Lisa. We'll just kind of kick it back and forth here a little bit. So pretty powerful stuff we're going to share in the next short period of time. So I just want to kind of get ready to... I have not obviously been here to live through the experience of where we've been as a community, and I do believe, though, that what I'm generally starting to hear from some of my new colleagues in the area and some of our families, that this will be an exciting opportunity for our community and for our youngest children coming on board. So I'll get Mike, you're okay, just and yourself and the team, and then we'll jump right in. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to provide an update on where my team has been over the last few months looking at Lewisboro Elementary and to discuss kind of some of the options and some ideas that we've discussed with the Facilities Committee as well. With us here tonight is myself. My name is Michael Lantier. I'm an engineer with H2M Architects and Engineers. I've been with them for about 20 years. Next to me, I have Brian Paddock. He's a senior architect out of our White Plains office. And I have Kevin Medler, who is a studio director and a senior architect out of our Westchester and our Melville office at this point. Let's see if this works. There we go. So just a very brief update. I'm happy to answer any questions at any point during this. Just a real little update on who H2M is, and really a short story. We're a multi-disciplined architectural and engineering consulting firm. We've been in business about 93 years now, and we really have every type of architect and engineer under one roof, with the exception of, I believe, nuclear engineers. So we really have every type...
Wait, there you go.
So we really have everything under, you know, we like to say, one roof. We have a number of offices throughout the, really, the eastern seaboard. We are headquarters in Melville. The offices that are serving Katona Lewisboro are really out of our Westchester, our Surfern, and our Melville office as well. The team that's servicing everybody. So just to talk about the conceptual process, really, that we have been through. We started out doing a couple high-level walkthroughs. At first, we walked the entire building with Mike, Facilities Director, to just get, you know, a little bit of a learning experience on our end to learn about the issues that he's currently having with the building, to get some ideas of what some of the communication has been across the district. And then we took an independent look at it with a team of architects, a team of a bunch of different types of engineers, and we came up with really three concepts. At first, you know, we looked at it, and we said, this is pretty straightforward. We have this area that's in pretty good condition, that it would really make sense. It's a newer part of the building. This really would make sense to keep, and let's put some costs together to renovate this area while kind of decommissioning and also demolishing other certain parts of the building, which made sense. And I'll get into some drawings in a second. After we looked at the first concept, we kind of took a step back, and we said, you know, we think there's more opportunities here, so let's go another step forward, and let's try to test out a couple other concepts that we have. And we did. We had a second concept with which we tried to really scale back the dollar value and try to demolish as much as we possibly can while maintaining some of the area for potential UPK, but also maintaining some of the building so we just wouldn't have to potentially demolish it. Then we said, wait a second. There's another opportunity here where we have some of the infrastructure currently available in part of the building that's slightly older than a part of the other building, but let's cross this out and see where this kind of would leave us and what kind of potential impact it has to the site and to the building. And that's really where we landed on Concept 3. And the reason that we continued and we presented Concept 3 is because it's not the most inexpensive option of just decommissioning or weatherizing your building, but it really provides the district with the most flexibility without demolishing the entire building. It actually keeps a good amount of your square footage while being really as cost-effective as we possibly can, but also providing you, not just for the UPK that you're looking for right now, but some additional spaces that can be used for other programs that can be decided at a later date, either for community usage or expanding part of the UPK program and some other community programs potentially. What we also did then, you know, as we were talking out, we said, well, the community in the district also has to understand that there is a cost if we decide that we really don't want to do anything. We want to leave the building there, but we want to kind of protect the building so if we decide to do something in a number of years, that the building is not completely beyond repair at that point. Also, there would be some safety concerns. If you have a deteriorating building, you need to make sure that you're securing the site or potentially fully demolishing part of the site. So there are some associated costs with what we're calling doing nothing. And then we'll talk about the next steps a little bit more. The next steps would really be continuing to develop what we have presented in Concept 3. You'll see right now, we're really just using the existing floor plan, but the next steps would be to present an actual floor plan based on the curriculum that we would further discuss. And then we would agree to this general concept, and then we would discuss the funding options and potential timeline as we proceed. So right now on the screen, what we're showing is just a very high-level overview of the existing building. The way that we broke it down is primarily into the age of construction of the different areas. I know that there's a lot of information on this on the screen right here, but essentially, it's Area A in the top left, and it kind of follows it around to B, C. D is the green part in the middle. E is the big part on the right. F is in the purple is the area that the town is currently using, and then H is the existing portals for the police. And Area G is shown off to the side a little bit. That's actually your utility room that is below Area E. And as I go through toggling between this and the next slide, you'll see where Concept 3 ultimately landed with us, with keeping certain portions of the building while demolishing other portions. And the summary key that we have on these screens does maintain, as I toggle through back and forth. So this is now where we would land with proposed versus the existing. So you could see that we are demolishing, it is, areas B, C, and H are completely demolished while we're leaving the gymnasium, which was constructed in 2004. It is in great condition, so we're keeping that. We're keeping the green area in the middle. That's Area D, just because it is fairly newly constructed in the mid-'90s. We've kept Area E, which is on the right side, primarily as the area that would be used for UPK. And the reason that we ended up keeping that area is because of the existing infrastructure. The classrooms are currently sized adequately for universal pre-K, and a big cost that we would have incurred if we tried to use other portions of the building as the in-class bathrooms that would be required for UPK. This Area E, each one of these classrooms currently has a bathroom associated with it, so your infrastructure is already there. There's also an area way underneath that building, which helps with any new infrastructure utilities that we have to replace to bring into that portion of the building. So the summary key, if this does get distributed, the summary key on the top right basically just gives a very high-level summary of what we were planning to do with each space. We're also showing a potential either covered walkway or enclosed walkway between the student-used area and the existing gymnasium. There's some flexibility that during a design process, we would determine where that connection point would be the most efficiently located. What we've provided now on this sketch, this is again Concept 3, sorry. This is a very, very high-level aerial. We wanted to do kind of part of a process here is to show what the existing site would look like with the portions of the building that remain. There was a large request to see if we could fit in a soccer field, which we were able to in the area that would be partly demolished. And then with the front entranceway and the driveway and the parking areas, that's really, it's very highly conceptual at this point. Basically, what the thought is, is that we would have a loop, a traffic loop, so the drop-off area would bring the students very close to the building into a plaza-type area, and then we would maintain something like the existing traffic flow. You'd have a smaller area for your handicap or visitors closer, as close to the building as we possibly can, and then a larger parking lot for staff. The big takeaway from this drawing is that there really is flexibility with the front. I know we're showing paved areas. Ultimately, what would decide what that area would look like would come down to our survey. We'd get our survey, our utilities, our survey would tell us elevations. It would help us with our drainage, and then that would really help us to paint a picture which would make the most sense. But at a very high level, we would have a roundabout or a drop-off very close to the main front entrance, and then a couple ancillary, larger parking areas. So when we go into costs, this is a cost opinion that H2M put together based upon a number of different items. A number of it is from recently bid projects that we've had internally to determine associated costs with, you know, roofing, demolition, and then general interior renovations. We then do a takeoff based on a square foot basis with a number of these items, and then we also add in individual line items for certain other things that we know are included, like additional paving work or additional playgrounds for certain areas of the building. There is a detailed spreadsheet. I'm sorry. I'm changing on my screen, like everyone can see. So there is a very detailed spreadsheet that's behind this one. We're really just giving the overall project costs. Another item to explain when we go through project costs, project costs are, they include the hard costs of the project, which is what we would expect to physically pay the contractor for his labor and material, but there's other costs that do unfortunately drive up our overall project costs. What we have included in here, we have a 10% for our general contingency in our bonds. That's just what the contractor is going to have to pay for his workforce. We include a 5% design contingency. That's kind of a little leeway for us because there's a lot of unknowns still, so we have a 5% included for that. We do have an 8% escalation included in all of the numbers that we're presenting tonight, and that assumes that it's going to be about a two-year process at a 4% per year. That is one of those items that, you know, we don't have a crystal ball. No one can tell exactly what escalation is going to be like. Right now, we're seeing escalation lower than that. So again, we do think these numbers are a little bit conservative. We also have a 5% construction contingency, so that's for something that we come into an unknown or an unforeseen condition during construction after the design, once the contractor's in place, and that's 5%. And then we have an additional 12% in there for what's called your soft costs. That's for your architect fees. That's for your construction management fees. That's for your environmental testing costs. That's for your attorney fees and any external marketing costs that the district may have. So after that, we wanted to put together kind of a high-level general cost that we call really that do nothing and really what's included here. And across the board, on most of the portions of the building, we really have your weatherization and your maintaining. So that is your cost for a new roof across the entire building. That is a cost for your facade work across the building to really maintain your weather tightness. It includes some minor mechanical upgrades, and then it does also include your cost for demolition. So your hard cost in this case, we're right about $5 million for the cost to, for the hard cost to really just try to maintain and protect that building for the long term. And then built onto that is about another 20 or so, almost 32% for your contingencies and your associated project costs. So that's what's driving up that number from $5 million to a total project cost of $7 million.
So if it's all right on this piece, we'll kind of pick that slide up there, and I'll have Lisa walk this through a little bit as far as what would be that average tax impact, Lisa?
Yes. So we had our fiscal capital market associates, our fiscal advisors, run just some scenarios for us if we were to borrow the amount of money that is proposed on the last slide of the presentation. And again, it's a lot of this is so theoretical because first of all, we would have to go to SED and have a reassessment of the building as far as building aid units are concerned, because the building is rated as an elementary school. This is UPK. There's much smaller class ratios. It brings down the building aid units. As we know, our building aid is also pretty much as low as it can go. But the building aid units are, would also affect that. But so we, and we don't know which portions of it would be aidable in terms of, you know, we assumed about 60% of it would be aidable. So what we did is we took the average home value, and how we calculated that was not all of our taxing areas are at 100% valuation. So we took the estimated average assessed value divided by the equalization rate to get an average home value. And then so we used that to calculate what a monthly tax impact would be at the peak period of borrowing during the, you know, during the phases of borrowing. So it would be 15-year borrowing. So that'd be around 2033. So the impact would be in our lowest, in our largest area would be approximately $20 a month, and as followed by, you know, 17, 25 in Lewisboro, and then North Salem at $10, and Poundridge at $26. So that is, again, it's all, you know, very high level, but it's just, you know, the best we can do with the information we have at hand right now. So...
Just to clarify, this is not for the do-nothing scenario. This is for the...
This would be to...
Do the project.
To-do scenario, three, Concept 3, and to renovate and create UPK. And I think actually, so on the next slide, I believe... And I think actually, so on the next slide, I believe, we can see right now, we have this line, if you ever look at our state aid rents, you'll see this $820,800 on our state aid runs every year, and that is our UPK allocation from the state. It's only accessible, though, it's not true state aid because it's only accessible by reimbursement of actually running the programs until prior to last school year, we, we're not able to operate UPK programs because we don't have space in our buildings. We did put out RFP, the Finance Committee, Finance Committee, worked and wrote some RFPs, and specifically for a community-based organization to work with us to operate a UPK program in their own space. So this is the second year in which that is happening, and this year, we were able to add some more slots. This year, we have 44 students in our UPK program, so we're utilizing $237,000 of that $820,000 allocation, but we are still leaving $583,000 on the table, so to speak, because the state actually has calculated 100, allocation of 152 students at $5,400 per student. So there is, again, that allocation of the state to actually provide the services, but we, you know, what we need is the space, again, because that is, you know, we were kind of maxed out in spaces, so.
And we're turning away community members because we have to run a lottery because we don't have enough space.
Yes, Lauren, thank you. That is, it is quite a number of individuals, of community families who are turned away because it is, there's, there's a high demand for it and a high, and a great interest in the program. So it's, so probably two-thirds roughly of, of the applications that we receive for the, the lottery are, you know, turned away, so.
And then just on the next slide here, what we were trying to show in general of the slots that are used and that are not used, so basically, less than one-third of those slots are used like Lisa was describing there. And then just on the right-hand side, the relative conservative range, if you were to go ahead and bring one of your little kiddos to a preschool program now, would be approximately between $12,000 and $16,000. The reality is that would now turn into savings for our KLSD preschool families and that basis. And then the reality is, is if you looked at it on an annual basis, we get 100, 100 more students into this space, you're looking at, you know, a little over a million to maybe a million and a half dollars that you would commute to saving on an annual basis. So the other thought here, I would anticipate is that as we would hopefully be able to provide even some, some jobs in our local area, we're looking obviously at teachers that would be going into these different classrooms and supporting and teacher aid support. So the reality of this really in a lot of different ways adding to the community in that regard, and then obviously from the overarching spot of just the overall value of community property and those homes in that area as well as the ones in the larger group. So with where we're looking at right now, we would see certainly expenditures to make this happen. The reality of also the ongoing basis here about saving for every single year, those UPK families that would come forth. What we would anticipate is that if some families, like is this case now, where there typically references wraparound, so if it needs more time in the morning, afternoon, that would be a piece there, and some families don't. So it just depends about, you know, is that five-hour day roughly worth for you now, or do you need that wraparound? So again, even if we looked at those wraparound dollars you're talking about, this is looking at a typical number, those wraparound numbers would be even higher. So again, the general idea of showing that for the investment in the community, I think what I'm understanding is a very clear commitment to the community of, of kind of protecting and preserving that space, and I would say Mike and the team have done that well over the years. The interior strength of that building is very good, and like Mike and the group said before, very sound in there, roofs do have an end of life, and we are there. And if we're going to stay with that commitment and protect that, the do-nothing is take care of that roof and weatherize and things that are just old, and, or we look at going and saying, taking it down and bringing it back up to actually a useful purpose for the children and our schools and stuff. So I just, we wanted to highlight that component there as well, too, so.
And potential community space, too, in the, in the existing library area with the beautiful skylight in there.
And I think that's a really good piece. I know as we kind of get a little bit later, we'll go back to that map and show where that library is and show where the gymnasium is, and there's a lovely art room that will be maintained through that space as well, too. So there are many, many good opportunities for us to be able to use that. And then also think about just areas when we look at, you know, evening activities, weekend activities, school break activities and things that really can be used as a multi-use space out there, and even a new, you know, not a full competitive athletic soccer field, but for the younger kids, absolutely. And so there's going to be just a whole abundance of opportunities we could use in there, so.
And even a good practice space. I know that, you know, our sports programs are flourishing, and it's, you know, it's a juggling act to find enough time to get the kids on the fields.
And I'm not sure, but Hudson would say, but I think maybe at the senior year experience might not be a bad place to go and kind of do that senior year experience for some of our seniors and stuff.
Oh, yeah. I have to go out and change.
So what I'd like to do is shift, and then we'll probably go back to some of the schematic bits. Okay, Mike, just the anticipated project timeline here, so there's.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So when I look at the screen, I know that there was a conversation about the soccer field. Do we have the overlay somewhere about, weren't we using field space for some of the solar panels?
It's the other side.
It's the other side?
Yes, it's the lower, I believe Mike's there, as I am.
It's over here.
No, you can't even see it on here.
It's on the other side of the trees.
It's a lower field.
Thanks, Mike.
So it's like way over there?
Yeah.
That was already. And, and all the space that we were using on top of the building is still structurally staying there because there were spaces on top of the building that we were using as well.
We are only doing ground-mounted at LES because the, because the roofs are not suitable for.
And that's a great thought, because if we so chose, we may come back for a Phase B of putting, you know, those, those panels on top of the new roof. They just can't just go up there now, but we could come back later and do another Phase B with more panels that could go on top of that roof when it's done.
I've got a question.
Yes.
What are the hours of UPK?
So typically, you're looking at a nine to two, a piece of five hours, and that's like right now. So some parents do what's called a wraparound before and after school, and some don't, and so it'd be the same space in here that we would provide that opportunity. Also, we'll be exploring where perhaps we would partner with Bosse's more likely, but for special education for preschool children, that we would be able to have that in that space as well. So, you know, you would have maybe a student or two from the Tonalus Borough, yet we'd be able to bring other students into this space, and then that allows, you know, a little bit of revenue to come to the schools for that work, but it also does allow for our families not to have, it's very difficult to find that program, to go, to go a pretty good distance to get that piece.
We learned from Ebelies, some families are going down to Rockland.
Yeah.
So these young children, an hour each way.
Yes.
And in terms of, you mentioned revenue, so I know that one of the big things in this community is having space recreationally. Like, this has been one of the biggest complaints with having LES sit there, right? Is a lot of people say, why don't we have, I know a lot of families like myself, we actually pay to go to the rec center in, in Ridgefield. So I think I heard we have the library, are there plans to be able to use this space? Are we going to find ourselves where because we're using this for UPK, we now can't use this space for other things outside of ours? Just.
No, honestly, I think that's a partnership we'll continue with the town like we do right now whilst we're in the project, that yes, we'll have to kind of have the full access to the space, but bringing that gymnasium back to usage for the community in those areas. Honestly, the library is wonderful. So what options can take place in there? And then we anticipate maintaining the art room, it's a little different design there. So again, partnering with the town, really, it's really during the relatively short period of time, but let's say we finish at six in the evening, there could be evening opportunities that may be in there and on the weekend and stuff. So I would say it absolutely presents a lot of opportunities for the, for the overarching community. And, and the reality of looking at this space of where it is now and before, again, I would commend the district for maintaining the structure of it over this 13 years, I think is roughly now internally, because if we didn't do anything or touch it, we'd, we'd be looking at an even higher price tag to just, it's basically the roofs that are done right now, so, yeah.
And there's some great playgrounds in the back that are fairly, fairly new, and there was also a obstacle course nature trail system that, you know, we'd maybe be able to convince some community members to help bring back, you know, it's probably needs some pruning by now, but it was a really well-used space. So there's a lot of opportunities there for some outdoor.
There's always been a ton of opportunities there. That's why I just wanted to make sure that we're thinking that in mind when we are using this space, because it's been a big ask of the community.
And I agree with you, and I think key parting here, too, is now we're back up, we're code compliant, we've taken care of all, all those elements, and so we've got all of the updated systems that we need, like fire suppression and all those kind of things. So now we're actually in a spot, we can, gotta use it more in that regard, where really we were not able to do that when it was kind of for the most, most bald, so. So the next piece, and as Mike explained before, and I'll bounce back and forth here a little bit, is the first piece is, you know, the summer of '25, that's where the team got site visits, and then now here's looking at a little conceptual review, kicking over to kind of our committee that was doing this work, and then looking at kind of that October area where that little bit of scope review. So tonight, not specific to this date, but the idea is that if we're able to get that head nod, then we'd be starting moving through some of those things relatively at a brisk pace, and so I'll turn that back over to Mike on that December timeframe.
So the way that we put together the schedule was really looking at our, our important date of September of 2027 to be our completion date. That ended up being the goal of when we could put students into the building and fully use the site. At first, when we heard that date, we took, took a step back. It's very, it's very intimidating, it's very aggressive, but then we said, well, let's, let's, let's put, let's put together the schedule and see where it works out with what we know, what it takes us on our design side, what it takes our environmental team to go through that, that SECRE or the environmental process, what it takes to get through the bond process, and then what it takes for the construction. So we're looking at, you know, an approximate like 13 to 14-month time period for active construction. The benefit that we have is that the site is completely usable for construction. We're not trying to phase anything here or trying to maintain existing operations. Once we get going, we can really have them move. So, so realistically, a 13, 14-month window is, is realistic for that type of construction, and then we really worked back from there. And where that puts us is in January, we're really pretty far along into that, that environmental or that SECRE process where we're putting information in front of the board, and we're having the board accept the role of being your, what's the term I'm looking for? Your lead agency, I'm sorry, thank you, where the board then takes on the lead, and that, that's more of a formality, the state requires the board or the district to become lead agency, although we end up performing all the due diligence for you, and we put it out to anyone that potentially would have any interest in becoming the lead agency to notify them. So that's really in January, and then in, in February is when the board would then have to agree to go out for the bond in May, and that we would accept the secret determination from your environmental professionals. And then after it's been publicly announced that the board is holding a vote in May, that's when we would, you know, as a team, put together the public presentations, you know, it's, you know, anywhere from two to five-plus presentations, that's, that's up to a, a, a kind of a schedule that we put together. And then the, the vote occurs in May. Our goal is to be pretty close to done with a design at that point in order to make that September of 2027 substantial completion date. That would require us to be pretty close to be completed with the design. So once that funding mechanism is in place, we could then submit it to the state for that permitting process. The benefit that we have with the state right now is that their review window is significantly lower than it's been over the last 15 years even, and we're even a little bit conservative with what we have in here. We have a three-month period for their review. We should be able to condense that a little bit more, providing us with some extra time for bidding and hopefully to start construction. That's really the schedule at a high level, but, but I'm happy to answer any questions that, that anyone might have on kind of the scope or the pricing or, you know, any, anything that's more general.
Were you saving about half of the building? A half of the, I mean, is it roughly?
It's a probably about two-thirds. Yeah, we can give you the exact square footage, but yeah, it's probably about two-thirds of the existing building does get saved.
Along with the tile wall.
Along with the tile wall.
Thanks for adding that picture in there. That brings, brings back some warm fuzzies.
This is really exciting. Thank you. I had one clarifying question about the tax impact.
Yes.
Just wondered whether that projection takes into account any debt that might be falling off, or whether those numbers could be mitigated at all if, if, if there's other debt payments that are rolling off where our taxpayers would be saving a few dollars here or there. I was just curious about the timing.
So the debt would be just, it would just be the local share specifically associated with the bond to do this work.
Okay.
So overall, the debt impact really at that point, we would, the EPC should be pretty neutral at that point, and when we would start making debt payments, and our current debt for October '22 referendum, '22 referendum, would also be relatively, we have done like the increases. So really, that would be the increases. We do have debt falling off, and I think it is actually the same year that we would make the first, let me just double-check that. We have some debt falling off in the first year that we would be making some old debt falling off when we'd be making the first payment. So not quite as much, but still, so it's overall, and it's important for us to continue to keep our debt relatively, we don't, we don't want to go down in debt. It just really would not benefit the district, long-term financial health, it's, with the tax cap especially, it's very hard to get caught back up as far as being able to levy the amount of taxes that we would need to sustain the district and keep it fiscally healthy.
And it helps our credit rating, right? Is that correct? You said it helps.
Our reserves, keeping healthy reserves help our credit ratings, and then keeps our interest rates, our borrowing rates low, and our, any interest that we possibly earn in the bank higher. But yeah, so the, but just as far as the tax cap, capital exclusion is a component of it, so.
And I also think Lisa was planning on working with, I forgot who you're going to work with, that widget that we had the last bond about where you could go in and put in and figure out your exact, I think that's part of the plan, so that people can go figure out their exact assessment. Impact, thank you. That's the right word.
One other question about the design drawings, the existing versus the proposed. In the proposed, I really liked seeing that corridor, that seems super cool, because in the existing, I did wonder how are you going to get from the gym to these other demolished spaces? If we go back to the existing right before this, with Area C, this slide doesn't say proposed demolishment of Area C, so I wondered if at some point there had been contemplation of maybe not demolishing Area C, or if all along it was proposed for demolished. On the next slide, it does say Area C is demolished and it disappears, but I just wanted to clarify, like, was it always, is this a firm, we're definitely demolishing C, or was there some deliberation, maybe, maybe not on Area C?
So I think that that was probably a carryover from Concept Two, because we did, Concept Two really was trying to keep that existing cafeteria space.
Okay.
There was a fairly significant cost associated with keeping it, and it's an area that's not needed for, for UPK at that scale. But thank you, we'll have that, we'll, we'll fix that for the next one. Thank you.
But, you know, I really want to thank H2M for going back and taking the second deeper look, because from the original conversations that we had from when we had our first community meetings, the thought was the part that we're keeping would be the part that would be going away. But from them taking that harder look and looking at the kindergarten first-grade rooms with the existing bathrooms, and then saying, you know, this really is in good shape.
That's great.
And then it would have been more to retrofit the fifth-grade wing to be appropriate. So I just really want to thank you for coming in with fresh eyes, because for two years, we've been looking at kind of the opposite maybe happening, so, and ended up saving us money. So we, I really appreciate, you know, coming in with that fresh eyes.
It saves us a little bit of money, probably about 15% more square footage.
And gives us another field.
Yep, yep.
That's great.
Lisa, just to kind of go back a little bit to the, the, the tax question, am I correct to say that when we look at our debt servicing ratio as a percentage of our budget and we compare it to our districts in our region, we're still, even if we were, if voters were to approve this, we would still be at a pretty low rate in terms of sort of, we're still being pretty conservative in terms of our debt. Is that correct?
Yes. And our, our advisors review all of that prior to, you know, and, and the same advisors are working with the EPC. And our, our advisors review all of that prior to, you know, and, and the same advisors are working with the EPC, the same ones with the 22 vote budget. And so they look at all of that. It's, you know, I send them all the information so they can analyze, analyze it and run us a debt to aid ratio model to see what exactly the, it'll look like when our, you know, planning, borrowing in, in time for, I was actually doing the math as far as, because your state aid can't start for 18 months after SED approval. And I think we'll be like, we're going to, I was looking at that. So we're going to be, and I think we're about 13 months. So it's, uh, so we'll have to look at that too. But, um, but yeah, that's just, you know, all of those as far as when the payments are due and when aid flows in order to minimize as much as possible the local share to the taxpayers.
I think when there's a lot of families in districts, when they look at a timeline that says that they could be getting their little ones into pre-K and that everybody that wants pre-K by 2027 could get a spot, I think that's huge news. And, you know, I think this is really exciting when we have a space that would cost tremendous amount of money just to mothball or demolish versus having, you know, the ability to serve the community with this need that we know exists. I think this is really exciting.
And bringing laughter and, and life back to such a great elementary school. That was my elementary school. So very near and dear to my heart, and it's such a great place and such a beloved community space. So I think it's going to be fantastic. Anybody else have any other questions? Any comments? What do you need from us?
Just clarifying. So it feels like we have a head nod that we're okay to go ahead and move forward.
With Concept 3.
Yep. So then the next piece is in two weeks, we'll go ahead and bring kind of the official documentation for it to the board to approve. H2M is our work to start on our pre-bond work here. So then they can start walking this work through that timeline so they can get to the conceptual design phases and start doing that. And then related to that, in essence, we've, I think, will be completing the work of LES as was originally identified. So that, that team will no longer need to be there. We will then shift that conversation over to the finance committee so that we can look at the bond, the long-term structure and things. So that'd be part of our five-year plan as we would go through that work. So we'll be kind of making that handoff from, here's the purpose that the teams identified, or say, yep, let's go find that forward and then shift that over to the finance team. So now that can be inclusive of our long-term thinking in that regard. So we'll go ahead and start that work and then we'll just keep plugging in here on a, on a, an appropriate brisk timeline. And so we'll go ahead and get that done. And, and then as we spoke, really be ready in the spring to work with our PTOs and most often, you know, sharing out kind of some of this information, certainly at the board table here. And we'll go ahead and be meeting with, you know, even tomorrow, we have a parent council meeting. So we'll brief them very quickly about how we kind of came forth today, and this is where we're stepping forward. Again, with our parent council, one of the things they made very clear this year is that one of their goals is to, how can we as parents support the initiatives the district is moving forward with? And so this is obviously a large one. We would want to, again, as they always do amazing job partnering with our schools. And so how can we partner getting this information forward? So. I do want to thank you three gentlemen again for being here this evening. I really appreciate it. And, you know, and I don't remember exactly when you said it, but it stuck in my head. It's like where we have really good, good bones in this part of the building that we're going forth with. So I appreciate your insights on it. So thank you, sir.
I'll tell you, from an architectural and engineering standpoint, I mean, these are the projects that we love to do because there's great potential and there's a lot of options on that site. And, you know, we're happy, we are happy to be part of it.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks again, Brian. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. Well, just to go, just a short transition here to our next piece here. So as we get our technology shifted over, where we'll be looking at the next component of our 2030 plan. You should have in front of you a hard copy if you like, and then it's open there. Thank you, Kim, to pillar number?
Five.
Five. Yes. Thank you, Dr. Drake. I was just waiting. So.
No contest again, is that?
Well, you know, it was already open to the table. So we'll go ahead and, and then Christian's going to go ahead and join us here at the table. And then so Frank, and then we're going to go ahead and walk through this part of our wellbeing component here. So again, as you were very kind last year, we kind of gave a preliminary test of this theory. So this is our next pillar. And so again, as we go through the presentation tonight, this is a sample of kind of experiences and things that are happening within our schools. It's not an exhaustive ending list of these things. There's so many things that we're doing, but this is a starting spot. And so I'll go ahead and see if we can get the screen to the next page and who's got the, Frank's got the rope. So if you wouldn't mind flipping forward there for us. So again, and we just keep going, Frank, and I'll walk and talk. You'll see the mission vision and this will go through. So the book online, and Frank, if you just walk us all the way to the pillar there. Thank you, sir. So again, we'll look at left and right. Remember left and to the right. Left is really thinking inputs and structures and systems. On the right, we're looking at what's the, what is the expectation or that experience that we want from a learner that leaves our school district? So our inputs and outputs. So, and then the next piece, this is the area, just high level demographics that we've spoken about. And then we'll keep moving forward. And so then that'll lead us into, and we'll go right through this one, collaborative educators. We already spoke back in the fall. And so we'll keep going past that one. And then we're looking at tonight. We have wellbeing. So again, same structure, same feel. You will see, tie it over on your, your hard copy here. You'll see each one of those areas with aspirations are identified underneath those areas. And some areas will hopefully our, our technology, we're seeing we have some actual video, some student voice in there as well tonight. So, so thank you, Frank. Thank you, Christian, for being here tonight. So I'll turn it back over to you, Frank. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Blanch. So I'm actually rather partial to pillar five as it speaks to the holistic approach to student development. So with wellbeing, we recognize that the social, emotional and physical health of students is nurtured by leveraging our resources, ultimately building a culture of care. So when we talk about social, emotional learning, we're really teaching students to better understand how they think, how they feel, so they can better manage their emotions, build positive relationships and make responsible decisions. This form of learning takes place in many shapes, like how our elementary schools engage students in school-wide book reads. At Katon Elementary School, they read Big by Vashti Harrison, which follows a young girl's journey to self-love as she deals with negative images about her own body. October, Meadow Pond read Herman Jiggle. It's recess, not restress by Julia Cook. Through this book, students were able to identify safe and respectful behaviors during recess and how their actions affect others' play, leading to ways to solve problems at recess. At Ingres Miller, they read A Voice Like Yours by Frank Murphy as a part of Bullying Prevention Month, which also took place in October, learning that children's voices have power and should be used to stand up for what is right. To add to this, our elementary social workers, who are members of the building's clinical team, deliver social, emotional learning lessons in the classroom, ranging from zones of regulation to growth mindset. We want our students to be equipped with what people typically have called in the past the soft skills, but I'd rather call them EQ. So the, the emotional intelligence, those skills, so they have them and they feel valued and they know that they matter in our community. At John Jay Middle School, there are a series of wellness and gratitude activities that take place run by our school counselors and clinical team. Students create notes of thankfulness and gratitude while finding time to slow down during the busy days. This intentional pumping of the brakes is known as Wellness Week. And I'll speak to this a little bit more in the next section. Next part, one of John Jay High School's alums took social, emotional learning to the next level by finishing first at the Tri-County Science and Engineering Fair. Through our science research program, Hadley-Cortinade's project in clinical social psychology was centered around studying the effects of mindful breathing and progressive muscle relaxation on patients with a breast cancer diagnosis at their pre-operative appointments. It's a mouthful.
Wow.
I had to watch that video a few times. But, and if you're probably anticipating what I'm about to say, her work proved successful in decreasing anxiety levels through the use of a digital platform that she created.
Frank, I'm wondering if it's all right. Is, is this a good spot for us to see if our wellness video works there?
We can.
Does that work? Okay. And the team will try to get that going in the back for us. So just as we go through here. So see if that one will go. Thanks, Frank. Right.
You're, you're teaching lifelong coping skills there that will go with those kids for a long time.
And then that's, and that's part of the goal in doing that. So the skills that they are learning and applying in everyday school life, they move with that beyond our walls. It is a lifelong skill. Thank you, Frank. Yes. And so just the last bullet point to this section with the JCK Foundation. You may have heard this organization around the county. They have been our guests for the past couple of years. And their work is geared toward our ninth grade students. So JCK works hand in hand with students to address mental wellness and provide students with tools and strategies to have conversations with their peers about mental health. And so the next section, the balanced approach for learning and preparation for lifelong learning. This is connected to social, emotional learning because it's how we see the forest through the trees. In other words, it's having this big picture view of what we do. To work toward this, we have made some changes and built upon what we do well. So as you know, and we've heard this a little bit earlier from Hudson, that John Jay High School now has the block schedule and a community lunch. And fewer blocks each day, but more time within a content area has allowed our teachers to engage students on a deeper level, utilizing Socratic seminars, project-based learning, as just some of the approaches to make learning student-centered. The community lunch, even though longer minutes than what students were used to last year, has given them the time and space, also thanks to B-Wing being open, to socially connect. So that, that space has been really a benefit during that lunch, during that lunch block that we have. Meadow Pond Elementary School, in their banner-making blowout, created a Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support System, PBIS, where teachers give students Moose Moolah. So that's their mascot. So when they see kind, safe and responsible, respectful behavior, the students then add that moolah to a classroom jar. When it is filled, they have a celebration. Then they empty that jar into a school-wide moolah bin. And when the school's moolah bin is full, they create something fun for the entire school. And last year featured a series on social media, KLSD Gives Back, highlighting the many ways that KLSD students give back to the community. Some examples of what have taken place include John Jay High School's Lakota Code Drive, collecting holiday gifts for children throughout, through the community center of Northern Westchester, John Jay Middle School's animal toy drive, and the elementary and high school food drives they have. And as I alluded to earlier, John Jay Middle School's Wellness Week, and we just saw that video a little bit earlier, is tied to Wellness Wednesday. It is a group effort between our counseling team and our clinical team. And the week provides a range of activities that promote student wellness through yoga, chalk the walk, karaoke, sand art and therapy dogs. In-class teacher-led activities about wellness include exercises and mindful conversations, gratitude, and how music intertwine with mood. And finally, each school has a garden or greenhouse so that students can participate in growing and learning about horticulture, connecting what they eat to the importance of caring for earth.
Frank, I think, is this where we can do the handoff?
That's correct.
So my apologies before I got a little excited about the video.
Just referred back to it, just closed it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And now to our Director of Athletics and Wellness.
So the part of what you'll see, unless Frank hangs his hat to dry. So up there, we've been sharing our numbers and how, how many athletes take advantage of our program and why it's so rich. And so it's just a good example of, you know, when you, when you see 159 three-sport athletes, that student athletes really taking advantage of each of our seasons to really impact their overall experience here at John Jay. And we're really excited about, you know, Lorraine, I'll touch on a little bit on the success of the teams and, and the, what they've built and, and how proud we are of them and all the things that are actually still ahead of us, even though the fall season is coming to an end. We still have, we just still do have a team alive. One of the things that we worked within, within that, and it comes bound to that mental toughness piece within athletics. We were looking for a way to, how do we improve that within our student athletes? But then more importantly, how do we, how do we provide them with tools for, for? Because it's not just about managing, you know, the stress on an athletic field. It's also managing, you know, the fact that you're on the athletic field for a couple hours a day and now you have everything building up at home that you have to now go, because you've made that commitment, you have to stay up a little later, work a little harder. All these things are incredibly important to our overall growth. But we actually teamed up, Ray and I teamed up with a program out of Switzerland that really focused on that. It was, started off really off of tennis and soccer. But really, we were their first pilot. They came to the States last spring, or really last winter, and worked with us. And we piloted this program with our girls' lacrosse team for the first time and where they did specific lessons around the mental portion of the game, but also to look for ways to build their overall mental fitness. We like to use that term, mental fitness, because unfortunately, sometimes you can get a negative when you start to talk about mental health. Sometimes it looks to, people often go to the extreme. And we want to make sure our students know that this is, you know, such an important part of their daily life and that to be mentally fit is only going to improve you with everything that we're doing. And you'll see, as we talk about tonight, a lot of what we've built is tied, all ties together with that. So this particular program our girls took, our coaches became the, kind of the turnkey trainers within it and guided them through the program after we had that training take place. And we're really excited to say it was something that the girls really appreciated, having it as a resource. And, you know, from that pop, 86% of our athletes that took part in that experience rated it as very good or good. And so for a first time, first crack at this, and it's also their first version of it in the States, which we were actually able to help them mold a little bit and are continuing to work with them, was something we were really excited about. So one of the things that we did as their, kind of their flagship program is we now have expanded a little bit, just a little bit more. So this, we did our girl soccer team, our field hockey team and our volleyball team. And through those experiences, we found a couple of things that we need to work around because of the, the fall season, as you know, is incredibly fast. And so we were working with them on tweaking a few things that we think will be, make it that more beneficial for our kids. And the winter, we're looking to move forward with our boys and girls basketball programs as well as wrestling. And then the spring, we're going to move to our baseball and softball programs, boys across, we'll join girls across, as well as our boys tennis program. So we're really starting to move forward with it. It's becoming a staple, you know, within the work that we're doing.
I know that the girls' lacrosse team completely enjoyed, enjoyed it last year. And some of them said it was like their favorite part of the day, like the, when the days that they had the be well program, they really took advantage of it. So, and so important.
Nope. Video now?
Yes.
All right. So we get the video up in the front here. So thanks, Christian.
This is Kate Condon.
I've been really lucky to be able to be a part of this program. I think that it's so beyond important. And I'm probably going to carry this throughout my life. I would love to become a psychologist. I think that mental health really matters. And I'm just proud of the way that everybody on both my lacrosse and field hockey team has handled play well minds. It makes every single person on the team more invested. The way that it was proposed to us, the coaches are showing that they care because the whole thing is about mental health and it's showing that it's so much bigger than the game. And I think that's really, really important. The fact that our coaches are recognizing that we are teenage athletes that have a lot going on and they're here to support us and even give us a, like, tool to support us with. There is an acronym and a soul, and the whole idea of it is to like slow down and like let go of it. So you like stop, observe, assess the situation and then let it go. And I think that's been a really, really important part of my year, this like junior year. I've taken that into account and tried to like add that into my everyday life and think before I speak and assess each situation and see how I can play it out and like make it work better for me.
So I think the most important thing, one of the most important takeaways from that is, so in sports, we talk about failure, right? Failure is common. And it's your, how you react to failure to work that much harder and figure out why you're failing as opposed to the other. And so when you talk about how athletics impacts overall life and development, you heard the perfect example of, it starts with failure on the field and how to manage that. So you turn the page, and then you're ready for the next play. Otherwise, it will, everything will build, it'll happen again. And then again, it'll become a domino effect. And now you can take that very experience and then apply it, like she said, to her everyday life. And I think, when you hear that, it's a huge win, not just, obviously for our student athletes, but it shows the importance of athletics and how it crosses the barriers and really, our kids take it with them. So really excited about. Should I let her just go and just say, yeah? That was, she queued that up really impressively.
You know, one number that really sticks out to me on this page is the number of athletes being 800. We have 85 in the high school, 885 students in the high school. So I'm assuming that this is a combined junior.
It's all combined, yeah.
But that's, so it's what, maybe 1,200 in both schools? That's a huge number of our students. And one number that we don't have on here that you often talk about is the number of these teams that are scholar athletes with high GPAs. And so
Yeah, we have a school of distinction just two years ago, so, which was pretty awesome.
Yeah. So these are high-performing students that are giving back in tremendous ways. And it's great.
And I think with Christian bringing on the Playwell Minds, that speaks to that element. I think we heard it from our young student there, that this is on and off the field of competition because of the trust that our children are moving forward academically and athletically there too. So, and I think you're hopefully all hearing the same thing as we now work this through the expansion just this winter and into the spring and stuff. So, thanks, Christian.
And even just for us, from our department's standpoint, there's a strong connection to that. We heard this foundational skills for life beyond. So even from a counseling department's standpoint, when we look at how we work with our students and guide them through academic perseverance, post-secondary planning, career exploration, so we see the tie-ins to that too. So it's actually really, it's a benefit to hear what Mr. McCarthy's talking about and brought here, and then how it applies to our work in the counseling department too. So. And just a couple of points that I'd like to bring to your attention with Northwell and the Student Assistance Counselor. So as you probably know, that Northwell Health is our newest partnership. It's an exciting one for us, because at September's board meeting, we learned about our Tier One partnership. And that is a key takeaway, because it's going to allow our staff and our faculty to have the opportunity to be trained and to learn about the various topics, such as school avoidance and anxiety, and how to apply those skills and how to support our students in the day-to-day classroom work. And at the same time, there is a community aspect. We have students and caregivers or parents' guardians that are able to participate in what Northwell is offering to us. So you may have seen some of the community communications that went out recently in our news feed. There's one that just went out with the November newsletter for Northwell Health. So those are good opportunities for families to be involved. Sometimes families can participate anonymously. We heard Dr. Foyer explain a little bit about that back in the September board meeting. And then as for our Student Assistance Counselor, that person is housed out of John Jay High School and works confidentially with students related to substance use. So our Student Assistance Counselor meets not just individually, but runs small groups, pushes into classrooms, rolling out a prevention series, and also prevents the faculty and the latest information, whether it's substance use or the latest devices that play a part in that as well.
Are we jumping over to, because I know we did the Playwell Minds piece now, are we going to move to the adapted?
Yes.
So, one of the big things that we have been working really diligently at is to really upgrade our adapted education program and physical education. One was the hiring of Bill's daughter, who's been amazing. But
I think you should take credit for that.
A little piece of it.
So I think, but one of the things that was really important to us was to find a partnership, an ongoing partnership that we could work with in order to keep the learning ongoing, because it's constantly changing. The needs of our students change each year, depending on what their challenges are. And we need to be there to hit those head-on and help them work through it and also give them a great experience. So we teamed up with SUNY Cortland. We worked with Dr. Davis up there, who's just recently retired. But one of the things we would do, he'd come down for some workshops and some observations, then we'd sit, we'd brainstorm. Then we would go up and spend a day up in, or a day and a half really, up in Cortland. That gives an opportunity to kind of really make it our focus. When you stay on campus often, there's so many other things that are pulling at you, and we wanted to give our exclusive attention to it. So we took a team up there, and we did this actually for over a two-year period so far, which has been really exciting, the back and forth from that. Completely changed the program. We've added things like exercise connection, so many things that really level the playing field and allow our students with disabilities to actually participate in very similar levels because of how we're able to make modifications. So that's been a really strong, ongoing friendship and relationship. The other, one of the things we do do is we actually do a little bit of recruiting while we're up there. So I often will speak to the graduates of certain programs. He had me come in, speak to a couple of classes, and talk about interviewing, things they should be focusing on as they head out into the world. So it's really been a nice collaboration from that respect. We're happy to help them as well. So we're hoping to keep that ongoing with some new people that are coming in up there. But we also have to continue to work with Dr. Davis, and I'll be coming to see Ebelis for some more money in order to make all that happen. But we have really made a focus around buying equipment that's going to support that program. So it's something we're really excited about. And it's not just working with our students with cognitive disabilities, there's students who have physical disabilities. And we've created some real great team situations where our teachers have teamed up with the students and are really making a huge difference. So it's some things we're really excited about.
And that's really kind of a cross-pollination of pillar two, with belonging and mattering, and pillar five of wellbeing, because you're helping those students that may feel differently be able to have a class where they can do the same things as their classmates. And so that's so important.
Well, the other thing about that, it translates and transitions to kind of what we're going to talk about next, and that's our unified program from the athletic perspective. Currently, we have two programs. We have basketball and bowling. Both have been a huge success. If you have not had an opportunity to see our home opener that we have each year during J-Fest with our unified basketball team, where we actually stop the school day and they kick off J-Fest, we have the entire student body in the stands and surrounding the court. And then this year, we welcomed Byram Hills. It was one of the most electric moments that Jim has ever seen with each basket that took place. It was an incredible combination of our students' reaction and support levels for our students with cognitive disabilities. And then what's great about that program, it's taking our students, our mainstream students are on the same team, working together, they're looking out for each other, they're creating successful opportunities. And then it's to the roar of the crowd, which is, it's a special, special experience. So if it's not on your calendar, you definitely need to do it. I haven't met an athletic director that hasn't said it's the single best thing that we do in the world of athletics. So I definitely would recommend that. And we are looking at potential expansion. Bachi could be, that's happening in a couple of schools. So we could be heading into that. So I'll be looking for a Bachi court.
Where are you going to put those courts?
It could be one at Gooseboro.
And then also potentially, they actually start with flag football. So, all things that we'll be looking into in the future. So really exciting to see the partnership between all of our students coming together. So when you talk about wellbeing, it's one of the most beautiful examples of it that takes place on our campus.
This is really great. I had just a couple of thoughts, because when you think about mental fitness and you think about helping kids learn to observe and manage their emotions and sort of help with their interpersonal relationships, these are not things that were part of my educational experience. And it's great to see how we've evolved to look at the whole child. And I think it'll be interesting to see, I don't know when we started at the elementary level, but it would be interesting to see, as the elementary kids come up, will we be able to observe, in terms of mental fitness, the impact of the work that's been doing now at the elementary level with zones of regulation and all of the work that we're doing now. It'll be really interesting to see sort of, you know, that progress as they're coming up. I don't know exactly when we started, but it's something that, and I was also thinking, I'm learning as a parent, because these are not things that were taught when I was in school. And I have to imagine that even for the adult staff in the buildings to be exposed to some of this, it's enriching as well for them. So just congratulations, this is great work. And very excited to hear about it.
So with that, we appreciate that very much. And our staff and students are excited about it. So it really makes it a team effort. So it's something that's been, allowed us to springboard to where we are today. A little bit about that is coming back to, when we talk about our wellness program, Wellness Wednesdays, so what we were looking to do when we, the high school, and Frank will talk about it a little bit, they were doing the Wellness Wednesdays. And what we looked at when we were talking about the physical education program at the high school level, you know, you're going three days, one week, two days the next. And one of the things we were seeing was, you know, how can we create a common thread that's not just about participation and engagement in fitness or different physical activities and from that perspective, and a focus on mindfulness and recovery and things that often haven't been part of the program, but it's critical that they are part of everyone's program. So we kind of moved to our version of Wellness Wednesdays. And we start that with community circles. And the purpose of the community circles is really around giving kids an opportunity to feel comfortable, you know, with the people that they're with within their class. So you'll see, obviously, the gym, we have larger groups. So you see a number of circles around the gym, and they'll put prompts up on our scoreboards that allow kids to then start conversations around that. And the goal with that was really to get, have our kids feel comfortable in that environment and comfortable to be themselves around their classmates, more importantly, which will then, they'll be more likely to want to do more and try new things. And so we'll start with, Wednesdays is about 10 to 12 minutes of those conversations, which have really been fun. And they've been fun things, but, you know, what's your favorite ice cream, to all those types of things. To, now it's talking about, how does it feel to be within this particular class? And one of the things that evolved from that was the physical education staff, the high school created a SMART goal, to develop a higher sense of belonging within the program. And so one of the things that they did as part of these community circles, they've been trying to create relationships and get a chance to hear from more kids who don't normally get a chance in the large group setting. And what's happened is, we most recently did a wellbeing survey within the class, which was incredibly informative, and we were really excited about. So I'm going to share some of that, because after that survey, all which was about belonging took place. Here's some of the stats that are from the data that's coming out, we're really excited about. Over 85% of students, now remember, every other day, we're getting half the school is coming through that space. Over 85% of the students said they strongly agree or agree that they feel a sense of belonging in their physical education class. Over 85% of students said they strongly agree or agree that they are comfortable being themselves in their physical educations class. Over 90% of the students said they strongly agree or agree that they feel respected by their teachers. Over 85% of the students said they strongly agree or agree that they are accepted by their classmates. Now, we talk about physical education, or we'll go back to when many of you were there, gym, and some of the stereotypes and things that took place around those programs. It's pretty exciting to see that we've really come a long way. And that's been building, I know, for the 17 years I've been here. And it's been a primary focus to create this. And we have an incredible staff that's working towards this and are the ones who are creating this, and they're the ones making the relationships. So we're really, really proud of that. But when you live in a world where people use the roll-out-the-ball mechanism and this and that, to see that this is actually taking place, that they feel comfortable, they're respected, they're comfortable with classmates, that's not a normal response that we would have gotten, I would say, even 15 years ago. So still much work to be done, right? Doesn't mean anything's perfect by any means, and we don't have to continue to evolve in order to keep us there and move beyond that, beyond those numbers. But a great step nonetheless that we're really excited about. So with that program, we also do a piece called Playability. And this is all about mindfulness, recovery, yoga. These are things that we want to say, hey, the greatest athletes in the world, this is part of what they do in training. Your CrossFitters, your pro athletes, and we want to make sure our kids are understanding the importance of it, the time to be mindful, take a deep breath, escape for a second, and be about yourself in that moment, and just focus on what you're focusing on. The importance of stretching and the yoga from a perspective of recovery and avoiding injury. So it's been really positive. And at some point, they get so deep, they do nod off a little bit, which is appreciated. But the other thing it's done, it's created in our program that you come in, you have two workdays a week, which is in the fitness center, out in the fields. And then you have that Wednesday is your mindfulness day, your recovery day. So it's really changed, I think, for the kids, because it's not, I got to grind through three, you know, it's a chance for them, okay, I can focus on, what I need to focus on and mentally prepare myself for the rest of my day. So we're really excited about that. The next key piece of that was our fitness center. When I came here 17 years ago, actually, it might be able to find a video somewhere, where I said my goal was to create a health club within the schools. I don't want a weight room. I don't want, you know, this is for all, something for all of our students. And if you've been to our facility, obviously, it's one of the best facilities anywhere in the country, probably at the high school level, if not beyond that. And we're continuing to try to get as much use out of that as possible and continue to improve that. But I think what's exciting about that is it enables us to tie everything that we do to everyday life, right? So when we talk about the exercise, exercise is the greatest prescription for anxiety and depression. We know that. So when we talk about the benefits of exercise that we can embed into our program every day, we begin to share the why, right? If you know your why, you start to develop a purpose around it and how it impacts. Our why is getting them to understand how fitness can change, even if they don't have to be an athlete, and fitness can impact them in incredibly positive way, and how they feel about themselves, how they focus, how they commit to things. And the research is all there. So it's there for the taking. And so we're trying to grab it and lay it out for them as much as possible so they understand the why. A big portion of what we've moved to now is connecting that with what's happening in our health program. And now we're even including longevity. A lot of longevity information, because knowing it now, a couple of things, why is it important? Number one, it's important to start and understand how you can impact yourself long-term, especially when we hear dementia, and what it means to the brain, what it means to quality of life down the road. The other thing is they get to take it home and share it with their families, because I know, like, when my kids come home, it's, okay, Dad, you're getting a little, a little outside. And you can't be laying around here. You got to, there's reasons for why you do what you do. And so it's really important that, because that can change someone's life in a really positive way when we talk about maximizing our last 15, you know, because we know where the drop-off starts to begin. And if you have the knowledge base, you're able to really change how you experience that period of time. And so really important, because that impacts our kids too, and will impact them and generations as we go on. So really excited about that. The other piece, the real last piece that I wanted to connect, is that if you go to any college, or you've taken your child to college, one of the things you're now seeing, which was not the case when I went to college, is that they have these elaborate fitness centers that they show off. And the purpose of that is to create a positive social experience for kids to be within, and be with their peers. Our kids are going into that space with an incredible knowledge base. So they're immediately comfortable in a space that's going to have really a large number of kids. So you're meeting people, you're confident in that space, and it's something that really has made a difference. So another piece that ties to all this that we're really excited about. So another piece that ties all this that we're really excited about.
So, so there's actually something that Mr. McCarthy mentioned a couple of times that I picked up on is this supportive nature of what students are doing for each other. So I, I think of just how everyone shows up when the time calls for it and they do that time and time again. I've seen that even just in the first couple of months of school being in session. And it makes me think of like the, this particular section about supporting school culture and community building. So whether you're talking about the community circles that happened at the K5 level or the restorative circles that are taking place at the six through 12, they all have this empathic nature tied to it. And so, and what it really looks to do is just continue to strengthen the quality of relationships that people have with one another. And, and that came through in what you were just saying before. So I mean, just to further this idea a little bit more, Meadow Pond, they had students that create identity webs. And through doing that, they're able to learn about each other and their backgrounds and shines light on what makes each of their backgrounds so unique in doing that. And I had to do a double take when I first started here not too long ago and they talked about Club Chella. And I'm like, you mean Coachella? No, no, Club Chella, they kept saying. So it was a play on the title of it, but really in essence, what is it? It, we have this kickoff event for John J High School and it's a high-energy student club fair with dedicated time for students to come into the gym, learn about everything that there is to offer in terms of extracurricular activities and promote that involvement. So it was, it's just a lot of fun to see the students that get really engaged in promoting the clubs that they are a part of and then bringing more students in to generate some more membership within that. So actually at that, this is a good time to cue our Club Chella video.
Without race help.
And so just to tie that into a couple of other involvements that happen, our middle school and elementary schools also have their own versions of school spirited events. The middle school has a pep rally as well, which recognizes students and their varying involvements around the school. Even at open house for John J Middle School, they were excited to bring back the team names and they built out their respective teams' webpages on, on their school website so families can follow along with what's happening. So if you've heard any of the team names, Wisdom Warriors, Charisma, Resilience, they all have connections to the district's pillars of light, knowledge and skills, wellbeing, just being two of them. And so just to close out some of the highlights and how we build community, we have also, lastly, our lead John J group that's composed of high school students. They assist in the preparation and the follow-through and execution of the community events that we have. So some of them that we have at the high school where lead is involved is our ninth grade orientation that took place at the end of the summer, our new family orientation. So welcomes all families across the grade levels nine through 12 as they join John J High School. We had our freshman kickoff at the beginning of the year, as well as our freshman check-ins, which is a series of check-ins where the, the lead students are meeting with the ninth graders in small groups during the community lunch multiple times throughout the year.
So the last piece we're going to kind of jump into and finish up with is around a lot of the professional development that we're actually doing with our coaching staff, which is supporting and you can see is being tied into everything that we're, that we presented tonight, falls right in line with that. So we do two days of professional development as part of our preseason with every, part of every season. So in the past, our, our meetings really used to be about information, right? Here's how the tryouts have to go. We still provide that, but in a much, in much more of a timely manner so that they do a lot of that on their own and then follow up that they've obviously understand what they need to be done. And we really spend that time on professional development, spending time with each other, learning from each other, learning from best practices. And that's been a big piece. We talked about the importance of being transformational as a coach and what that means and how important their platform is. We've worked with the Inside Out Program, which is a national program. That's been really helpful. You've probably heard me talk about that in the past, when we talk about your goal versus your purpose. When we talk about the reality of, we always, our goal will always be to win and strive for the best, but that's not what our purpose is. Our purpose is about these lifelong lessons. And one of the things that we really, you, you develop in that is that, is that purpose statement. That's something that I'm, you're going to hear me say every time I get to a microphone because it's really, really important. And we talk about our, my purpose, that I came up for our program and for me and what drives me is, you know, the importance that we, we're here to maximize the student experience through a culture of belonging in which student athletes feel valued while learning the importance of commitment, focus, empathy and respect. Our purpose is to inspire our athletes to commit to something much bigger than themselves, create bonds and friendships for a lifetime and connect with meaningful adults and learn life lessons through sports. You know, that's something that I push into every meeting I have and I push our staff, our coaching staff to come up with, with their purposes. And some of the, the things that we do follow up with them and try to get them to understand when they talk about, are they being successful? It's not how many, how many games they've won, how many championships we've raised. It's really been about, you know, why, asking them questions like, why do you coach? Be able to articulate why you coach, be able to articulate what it's like to be coached by you. You know, these are important things because it allows them to be reflective and then it changes the student experience because they're learning from the student response to, to the process. And I think that's really important. And when we talk about the belonging piece, the next series of questions that we look to answer and are hoping to answer yes and working towards answering yes in all these is for students to answer, do I belong here? You know, that's, that's something that's, that's paramount. Is this meaningful to me? Are life lessons part of this experience and, and those lifelong friendships, you know? And most importantly, can I do this? You know, so I feel that it's, it's part of that. And so that's going to be, that is our ongoing work along with the best practices and we're getting a lot of feedback, you know, from our student athletes, from our coaches through, through that experience and we're going to continue to push, you know, as we get ready for our staff developments coming up next week. So we're really excited about that. And I think that when you tie it all together, we can talk just briefly about the success of our teams. We were thrilled to watch our field hockey team and girls soccer team advance to the section one semifinals. We actually played in that horrendous rain and I was, I was, I was at my, I was, they played at the same time because we were trying to miss the storm. Epic fail, although it did get worse as the day went on. So I was in Pleasantville with our soccer, our girls soccer team and Matt Gallagher was in Rye with our field hockey team. And I could tell you, watching our kids play, especially under those conditions, was pretty intense. And they didn't play their best first half and were down 2-0. And that's when you think about your program. They could have just kind of packed it in, Pleasantville's too good, we're not, they hadn't, you know, lost and they, you know, they, they were blowing everyone out. Our, our kids just dug down deep, had a big goal and an incredible, incredible play off a free kick. And then the pressure that they put on that Pleasantville team who barely survived, you know, keeping us out of the goal balls, off the post, constant shut, it was just watching our kids compete at that level spoke to who they were. And it was an incredibly proud, wet moment for me, but incredibly, incredibly proud of them. I know right when I saw their coaches, he just looked at me and goes, did you see how they just didn't quit? And he couldn't have been more excited about how they finished. Our girls field hockey lost a heartbreaker in what has been said to be maybe the greatest high school field hockey game that was ever played. When you leave a game and the coach says, how could I be upset? They played amazing. The other team unfortunately played amazing, but it was one of the greatest things I've ever been a part of and I couldn't have asked them to do anything more. And so as much as you're disappointed you didn't move on, she couldn't have been more proud. And to watch the interaction of the student athletes with each other, praising each other. It started off with the goalie from Rye praising our goalie, you know, just to start the shaking of hands. So incredible, it was double overtime lost in the last minute of double overtime. So just an incredible season. Deb Wasson, incredible coach, incredible staff, Hilly Scallan. It's just something really to be so proud of. And we are still alive in our Saturday. The number two team in New York State, which is our John J Girls Cross Country Team, tries to win a section title and earn their shot to state, which is in a couple of weeks. So, you know, currently we're number two in the state, we're number, we are the county champions already. So our, you know, Coach Day Day and our girls are training incredibly hard and they are absolutely ready. So Saturday is big news, we should be coming out of Bowden Park, probably around 11:30 or so. So we're really excited and proud of them and hope that their success continues. So, thank you.
I think you forgot team.
Still, so our swimmers are heading to states, we have qualifiers to state.
Our girl swims are conference champions as a matter of fact. And, no, they are. What, what are you talking about?
So they are, they were the league champions of their-
Conference.
None of their conference. So we're, so the new rules around swimming and scores.
Oh, now there's new rules.
If you're an emerged program, you cannot win the section title. It's not, it's not possible, but I actually worked very hard at this portion of it that because they are all in the same league, I fought to say, we should at least crown a champion for the leagues because they're trying to create a balanced playing field so that it's single school against single school because we were having, and it still happens in the state, conglomerates of 10 or more schools were winning state championships in ice hockey and they, they beat Suffolk who's, doesn't meet with anyone. So like our girls gymnastics team had won a bunch of section titles until last year where they would have won again, but because we are a, a merged team, we're not able to do that. But we can use the, we can advance to state in particular races. So that's why I didn't share it that way.
Fine, if you want to put it that way. Our small combined programs did very well. And we have sections are going tomorrow and we have a number of athletes trying to get states, my daughter being one of them.
Qualifiers are ready, so it's exciting.
It's, it's an incredible program. We're grateful to what you've built over the years. And I, I do just want to echo one thing you said. So I've had three kids go to the state finals in lacrosse. My favorite game of all time is the unified basketball team. And you, you may have stolen Yoga Wednesdays from somebody sitting at this table. You had Gwen coming and doing yoga, so.
Miss Gwen. And one last fun fact, is this how old I actually am? This is one of my former coaches when I was at Rye Neck.
True story.
I remember the young man coming out for the first time, Les Gray.
That's true.
You got, the swimming joke aside, as somebody who was picked second to last in dodgeball back when it was gym, I really do appreciate all the work that is put into our fitness program and from the mental health standpoint. So one of the things you alluded to was the final 15. So there's a doctor, I don't know if that's where you got it from, but he's-
Peter Adia?
Yeah, so he's charging over $100,000 to kind of, but his program really is about diet and exercise and he brings in mindfulness for this, right? And so he only takes on a certain number of customers and we're giving this to our children already. Like we're, we're setting them up with this so this isn't like future information for them. This is not something that they'll have to pay an arm and a leg for because they'll be prepared to go into the world that way. And again, I just find it so valuable from an education standpoint that we're starting them up this way. You know, I will, I will also say, I have friends and I've, I've talked about this before in other school districts and I talk about all the work that we're doing on the social wellbeing of children and the mindfulness of children. They're not getting that. Like, you know, I have a friend who has a ninth grader who has no lunch period because she's doubled up on so many classes. And I said, that's deplorable and, and I'm so proud of the work that we're doing here for that.
Thank you.
Thank you gentlemen, I appreciate it, so very good.
Thank you very much. That was, thank you for bringing these pillars to us. I think it's just, I love how it's changed the conversations that we have about our programs and seeing things in a different light. And I hope other people are seeing the difference in the conversations. Not 10. Public comment, nobody's here for public comment, so to close the public comment session. Consent agenda, we are pulling, shoot, I thought I had written it down.
15.11.
15.11, oh, it's on the front, thank you. Pulling 15.11 from the consent agenda because we have a family member of a board member being appointed as a coach this evening. So we're going to pull that. Can I have somebody move the rest of the consent agenda? Is there any discussion on any of the topics? Carolyn, I think you raised your hand for a second.
Yes.
All those in favor? 6-0. And I'll make a motion to move 15.11. Can I have a second? Barbara, all those in favor? 5-0. And that brings us to 17.01, board dialogue and discussion.
I just want to highlight something that was said earlier and that was the JCK, JCK Foundation at John J. So when I was a freshman, they came in, they talked to us, it was really great to hear from them at the freshman meeting, but that was kind of all that we had from them. It was great having it, but I just want to highlight two of my friends, Drew Bonifaz and Wes McCourtney, they reached out to JCK and they're actually partnering with them now for their mental health club that they started this year. And they're like pushing into classes and talking about their own personal experiences with mental health. I think it's really remarkable that they're doing that and that they've been able to like meet with JCK about this and build a relationship with John J going forward.
That's great.
Hudson, I've also heard from some of the high schoolers how they are appreciating the student assistance counselor.
Yeah, definitely.
And being able to support that work too.
Yeah, and she's, she's pushing our health classes and she, she's really great and very helpful and easy to talk to for everyone.
I'm glad to hear it, thank you. Thank you Hudson. Anybody else? I do just want to thank again, I think we mentioned just at the beginning, Kristi Harris and, and Cottone Elementary School for being so warm and welcoming. And I must say, and I don't know about you, Marjorie, you've been here doing it a lot longer, but that was the best school visit I have ever been to. And for the community, Ray and team brought us through a school visit with our pillars and we were tasked with finding, you know, the profile of a learner and what we saw as we sat through two hours of classes and observing and watching the good work of this district in action. And it was really eye-opening to see the amazing work. And I do want to highlight one thing that the first grade teacher, Ms. Kudo, shared with us, or, and actually, Julia, actually I apologize, you may have shared it with us, their counting jar exercise, that this year the first grade was using these counting jars in October that in previous years they didn't get to until April. So the acceleration of education and learning that we're seeing in our classrooms because of the new programs that you've enabled the teachers to bring in is greatly appreciated. So fantastic work on, on that great visit. I'm looking forward to the next one and we're going to make sure we count those bingo squares next time. But, and I'm looking forward to see the output that Jessica takes from all of our Post-its with, so we had to point out examples of all of the pillars we saw in the classroom and so that we can start gathering data on actually how these come into play. And I think it's, it's going to be a fantastic year end. I don't know if you're going to do a presentation, but an amalgamation of, of everything that we've seen over the year. So, anybody else? With that being said, oh, okay.
That's a fake out.
Future meetings, Friday, November 7th, 2025, we have the Sustainability Committee meeting at 8:15 in the district office. Oh, and I do want to make a plug, I apologize, tomorrow is our Field of Honor on the front lawn to celebrate all of our veterans in the community. It's a fantastic celebration. It's a fantastic celebration, should be on the front lawn?
Yes.
Because I don't think we're having weather, what time, is that at noon?
Oh, it's 12:30.
12:30?
Yep.
Anybody in the community watching, it's a really great event to come down and, and be a part of. The student, it's student-led, student-run, and they consistently have done a good job. So a plug for that one. And then Thursday, November 20th, we are back here at 7:00 PM for our Board of Education meeting in the John Jay High School library, followed Friday, November 21st, with the Policy Committee at 12:00 noon in the district office conference room. And with that-
I think we've found it. We're good, just to know, Julia's just going to close this out a little bit, I think, so?
So I know there's a lot of interest in the literacy adoption process for the K-5 ELA curriculum for next year. And tomorrow, and currently actually on our website, on the instruction, Curriculum and Instruction webpage, there's a tab for K-5 literacy, a visual timeline that this shows all of the dates of our meetings, a summary of what was happening at each of those meetings, as well as an FAQ of some questions we've received about the process. So I encourage people to check it out. And on Tuesday, we had a full professional learning day here in the district and related to our work, all of the elementary teachers, or most of them, and the middle school ELA teachers participated in a science of reading presentation that was facilitated by Dr. Molly Ness, the same woman who was here. We learned about brain research, the profile of a dyslexic student's brain and how that functions and the implications for teaching. And it was very well-received from all the feedback I got. And we're going to repeat that presentation and some more throughout the course of the year. And we're looking forward to this coming together, which it is rapidly, so we're meeting again next week. So we've got a great team of really dedicated people, and I think that the additions to our website are going to really publicize this in a way that people will be excited about. And Dr. Blanch is going to communicate this in his Friday message tomorrow, so everybody knows that it's there.
Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome.
Such important work.
Thank you.
Yes.
Fantastic. With that, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn? Motion by Arwin? I'll second. All those in favor? 6-0. Thank you very much, everybody have a great weekend. Thank you.